Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the November Paulding County Planning Commission meeting. This time, I would ask if you have a mobile device or anything that makes noise, turn it off or turn it to silent so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We are going to dispense with the reading of how to participate in a public meeting. However, if you would like a copy of that, it is on the back table here in this room. Please feel free to take one. At this time, I will ask Planning Commission if you've had an opportunity to review the previous sessions' minutes. If you have any questions, comments, edits? If none, I will entertain a motion with regard to those previous minutes.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson. I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. All the applications before it today will be heard and presented by the applicant. You must be present for it to be considered as an applicant. Opportunity will be given to those, the applicant and those who wish to speak on behalf of the application, fifteen minutes total time. Applicant has an option to utilize all of that time at the beginning or may reserve some of it for rebuttal. Any questions from either the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners will not count against your time. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to an application or may have questions, comments, or concerns, also allotted fifteen minutes cumulative time. If you have anybody lining up behind you to speak, I would ask you to be mindful and courteous toward them. Or if you've got a lot of people wishing to speak, I would recommend that you assign one person as a spokesman. We will forward all of the recommendations from this commission. I'm going to confirm this with Mr. Robinson. I believe it will go to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners for their December thirteenth.
December thirteenth at 2:00 P.M.
Thirteenth meeting at 2:00 P.M. Again, the applicant must be present for it to be considered. There is an exception. The public hearing for the City of Hiram will, of course, be forwarded to the City of Hiram City Council. And then, the application for 22-31-Z, which is also a City of Hiram application for rezoning, will be forwarded to the City Council for consideration at the next public meeting that would be consistent with advertising requirements according to state law. Did I forget anything, Mr. Robinson?
22-28-Z, also City of Hiram, will be forwarded to the City Council.
You're absolutely right. Okay, thank you. You also have number four, which was on this previously, has been continued as as to the next available Planning Commission meeting, which will be in January, I would think.
Yes, on that particular one, 22-10-Z, Traeton Homes, they have officially withdrawn that application at this point.
Okay.
It will not be forwarded. Also, application 22-27-Z, it's another Traeton Home application, has been withdrawn by the applicant also. The other application, 22-29-Z, is being continued to the, which would most, will be the January Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. So at this time, if, I guess we're going to go roll right into the public hearing aspect of the meeting. We have two public hearings on list today. The first one will be for the Paulding County, Georgia will consider zoning ordinance text amendment to Title II Administration. Do you want to introduce that, Chris, or you can introduce it, Director Lippman?
Go for it.
Okay, this one is a public hearing. Paulding County, Georgia is considering text, zoning ordinance text amendments to Title II Administration, Title II zoning, and Title IV signs, and Title V telecommunications of, and this is of the United Unified Development Ordinance for Paulding County, Georgia.
Director Lippman? Thank you all. Thank you, Planning Commissioners, members of the Board of Commissioners. This is our second amendment to the UDO. And I'll just give a brief summary of the changes. There are four major areas that we are changing in there by ordinance, what we propose to be ordinance 22-14. The first one is a change related to the lot sizes, the minimum lot sizes in residential and some of the commercial zoning districts. For a long time, we've had an asterisk on those lots that are 20,000 square feet. It says that it may be different based on environmental health concerns. So we met with environmental health, and we send out, I think, seventy-five percent of the county is still zoned R2. And when we send out people and they ask what their property's owned, and they see that 20,000, I think there's, and a lot of that property probably doesn't have sewers, so we wanted to make it clear what the requirements are for sewer property, property that has public water and sewer, and property that has, is served by septic, Hank. So in the R2 LRO, O-N-I Neighborhood Business, NB1 and NB2, we are proposing to make a change to the minimum lot size, to require 20,000 square foot minimum for public sewage management systems with public water supply, 40,000 square feet for onsite sewage management systems with public water supply, and 43,560 square feet for onsite sewage management systems with non-public individual water supply. This was what the requirements that the state Environmental Health Division would require. We just wanted to codify it in our ordinance so people looking at our ordinance are clear on that. Our second change relates to trees and buffers. We had a meeting with some residents of a new subdivision, and one of the residents came up to me and made a comment about trees. And so, I went back and I looked, and I noticed that we hadn't kept all of, we had tree requirements in all residential zoning districts, but sometimes we called it a street, a tree, sometimes we call it a street tree, sometimes we call it a yard tree. So we went and we changed all those so that they all say yard trees. And I reached out to our extension office, Mary Kara Schofield, who is our extention agent. She's a forester, and so I thought, she probably knows more about trees than I do, so, and she did. So she provided us with a Georgia Forestry Commission Recommended Tree Species List, so we would like to incorporate that. It has trees that are appropriate for yards, it has trees that are appropriate for street trees, so we would like to incorporate that into our ordinances. We also have added a section that requires buffers to be, it requires installation of tree fencing along the limits of clearing or grading, which has drawn existing trees in accordance with any buffer requirements, and to require that to be in place until a notice of termination is submitted to the EPD. And we also added some definitions that relate to those tree topics. As we are today, the Planning Commission's meeting today, and instead of the Board of Commissioners hearing it tonight, they will be hearing it in a couple weeks. That is something that is a desire, to have that going forward in the future, so we needed to make a change to the article relating to amendments, just to make it known that the Planning Commission will meet on the fourth Monday, and the Board of Commissioners will act on it on the second Tuesday, or at another date if they should change their schedule. Our last group of changes are just some corrections and additions. We found some numbering errors since this has been adopted. We've added, like I mentioned, we added some definitions related to trees, also suggest adding a definition of comprehensive plan. We did a correction to the definition of guest house. We deleted two definitions, dwelling, attached cottage, and retirement communities, because those terms are no longer used. We changed some wording where required buffers were referenced as being required next to county roads, and we changed that to streets. We had some incorrect references to the development regulations, which have been corrected, and we updated the single point of contact for broadband network projects. And be happy to answer any questions.
So at this time, I will ask Planning Commission if you have any questions for Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much. At this point, I will open up the floor to public comment for the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Anybody wishing to speak, I would ask that you come forward, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair, and we will be happy to hear you.
I had a generalized question about, I was a little confused by, I'm sorry, Jonathan Jones with the Lead Engineering. The minimum lot size on septic, did I hear that correctly, that it'll be 43,560 square feet minimum now? Because it's not, okay. Because 21,780 is what's allowed on a septic system, so I just wanted to make sure that there's not a modification, and if there is, what it would be for septic subdivision, since that does entitle about seventy-five percent of the county's property.
Okay.
So that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to add comment?
Hello?
If you would sign in, please, and then state your name.
Yes.
Members of the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners and the staff, I'm Ruth Huggins with Park West Realty. My question may be more appropriate for the next public hearing item, but I just wanted to make sure. It's a general question regarding the UDO and the reserved section for the PV Planned Village District. I mean, if this is going to be voted on in Paulding County the thirteenth of December, I mean, I guess, I guess we're interested in knowing if that PV Planned District Village can be put back into the UDO to be considered, or to be a part of that plan.
I will allow Director Lippman to respond to that from the county's behalf, and then we'll address the question on the second public hearing once that begins.
Okay, so I would like to speak some more about that.
Please go ahead.
No, no, I mean on the, on the, on, on the second one. Well, it's needed in both, I believe it's needed in both Paulding County and Hiram. And so, I mean, it's the perfect opportunity. It says in the, in the UDO, it says reserved, and I have the, the, you know, the outline of what was created last year on the Planned Village District, and, you know, working with some people that, that have, you know, spent some time and effort and money in planning and so forth for an appropriate, appropriately sized and located project that could utilize this, this district. So we're interested in knowing if that can be put back into the UDO and voted on December thirteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to have comment? Hearing none. At this time, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. However, I would ask Director Lippman if you would like to address, you can address both those questions. I know, I think you already did as an aside, but the minimum lot size question from Mr. Jones?
Yes.
And then the PV portion of what was left out of the UDO?
Yes. I will start with the minimum lot size. I talked fast, so probably didn't come across, there's three different criteria. If it's, if it's you have public water and sewage management, then in those districts that I outlined, your minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, as it has been. If you have onsite sewage management with public water, the minimum lot size is, and that is a typo, I read it wrong, it is the twenty-one, it's whatever half an acre is, it's 43,560 divided by two. If you have onsite sewage management with non-public water supply or well, then your minimum lot size is 43,560. And as far as the Planned Village, we did write a draft of it. It was pulled out when we adopted the initial Unified Development Ordinance. We wanted to complete the Comprehensive Plan, which we did complete and get adopted the end of October. The Comprehensive Plan has crossroad communities, and we want to limit any kind of development that Planned Village proposed to one of those nodes. And since we completed the study, we have actually asked our consultants to work on an additional special areas study for us. So we have met with some folks who were interested in doing a mixed-use development like that, but at this time, Planned Village was not in the list of items for this amendment, and we would have to do a separate advertisement to bring that in.
Are there any questions for Director Lippman for the Planning Commission?
Yeah, we're going to modify A2 to the 21 number. The 40,000 is going to change.
Yes.
Okay, so just a typo.
Yes.
Okay. So it's a half of 43,560.
Yeah, I think it's 21,780. And I'll double check, and I'll make sure the ordinance is right.
So I have one more question. So the Planned Village is not included in any changes, what you're saying?
No, no. Still needs more work, in staff's opinion. And we want to narrow down which of the crossroad communities that we think it would be best appropriated in.
Okay, that, because that's one concern I have, is that I think that unfortunately, like in the nineties and early 2000s, we were overrun with the PRDs. They saw that as a bonanza, and unfortunately, it appears it's that way too because of the mass number of, that we've had since then, since that came into existence. That's one thing I'd like to look at.
And it's, you know, it's not a zoning district that we would allow, it couldn't be allowed in the entire county, because the entire county doesn't have sewer. But we would definitely want to pick the right crossroads where we think a project might be good for the community and for potential residents, and we haven't nailed that down yet.
Thank you.
I have a question. The Planned Villages that you're talking about, and you pulled out one or two, I think, what were you expecting them to be?
Planned Village was-
And why did you pull them out for the expectation?
It was proposed as a mixed-use zoning district that would allow single-family detached, it would allow townhouses, it considered apartments. There was a requirement that there be a certain amount of commercial tied to a project. We wanted it to be a mixed use. When we put out the UDO for public comment, we got a lot of calls and people who were not fans of that district, so we thought it was best to move forward with the UDO without that section. That's why there's three reserved sections in between the commercial and residential for future, to be able to put in a residential or a mixed-use zoning district.
In a mixed-use residential and business so forth, you had to plan on certain areas for that, and you want areas where it's going to be compatible to-
Yes.
Businesses?
Well, the district, as we had drafted initially, had a commercial requirement for however many housing units you had to have, you had to have a certain amount of square footage of commercial. And we even put in there that you couldn't get a CO for a residential until a commercial got certificates of occupancies. But we just, that was the one comment that when we put out the initial UDO, we got a lot of negative comment back, and we just thought it would best to, we were in the middle of updating the Comprehensive Plan, and we knew we wanted to limit it to some of the crossroad areas, and we just got that adopted the end of October. We knew there was a lot of amendments that we wanted to make at this meeting, and that bringing that PV back just wasn't one of the top priorities.
I think, one of the areas in the crossroads area, somewhere in that area, in another one that's across from the hospital?
I believe that was one of the-
Okay.
I think those are definitely two that are under consideration.
Okay.
Any further questions from the Planning Commission?
That's one of the concerns I had with it, because it seems like what would happen was the residential part of it would be built first, without it being in conjunction with the commercial. And to me, it seems like the commercial would either be forgotten or it would not be done, and I think it's important for both of them to be in conjunction with the other to make it actually happen. That would be my concern with that.
If the residential happens first, then the commercial could follow. Would that work or not?
Certainly could, but we've learned from some of our metro Atlanta neighbors who have mixed-use zoning districts, and it just doesn't seem to happen that way. And we've heard a lot of proposals, and, you know, people bring residential, more dense ideas to us, and there's not been the commercial that we're looking for. So that's why we added an additional special areas study on 92, and like I said, we just adopted the Comprehensive Plan the end of October. It's only November 29th, it's only, not even a month old, I think, here. So it's, it's definitely something that we're looking at, but it's just, it was not on this slate of text amendments to include that.
Any other questions from Planning Commission?
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. So, Mr. Phillips, at this time, should we take a vote as far as a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So I will call for a vote on this particular public hearing as a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, whether or not you recommend approval or denial.
Make a motion for approval.
I have a motion from Mr. Leggett recommending approval.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes.
Five.
Well, okay, so, so all opposed, and then any abstentions, so there's two abstentions, okay. Motion passes five, zero, and two. This time, we will open up a public hearing with regard to the City of Hiram adopting the Unified Development Ordinance that has been adopted previously by Paulding County. Generally, I ask, Chris, if you want to introduce this, you're welcome to do so now, or if you want me to speak to it, I'll be happy to. Also, in the room, we have the zoning administrator for the City of Hiram here, between himself and then any questions that I may be able to answer, I'll be happy to address any of these questions. But Paulding County has traditionally and historically performed the development actions for the City of Hiram, from the issuance of land disturbance permits, building permits, COs, and of course, taking applications for special use permits, land use permits, and rezonings of properties, as well as hearing any kind of variance issues that may have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's a little unwieldy in our mind to continue operating with two differing zoning ordinances. If we're having one organization's staff, professional staff, responsible for administering those on behalf of the city, it makes more sense for us to move in that direction. So we have done so with two primary changes that are proposed. We will adopt exactly what Paulding County's UDO currently has, with the exception of the signed ordinance, which will remain the City of Hiram's current version of the signed ordinance, it will just be inserted in its place. And then, the use by right in I-1 and I-2 will remain for mini warehouse, warehouse, truck and trailer, tract, boat and RV, or any type of storage facility. There will not be a special use permit allowance under B-2. That is currently the way it is in the existing ordinance, and that is the proposed continuation in the adopted new ordinance. If there's any questions at this time, and I know we had one from Ms. Huggins, I'll be happy to address that shortly, but anybody wishing to speak on this or may have questions for me, I'll be happy to take those, or if the zoning administrator from the city would like to speak, you're welcome to. Any questions, please line up and ask. Public hearing is open.
Thank you for hearing me again. So I understand the status of the-
No, you've signed in, you've already signed in.
Yes, uh-huh. After Ms. Lippman's explanation, I understand the status of the PV District as far as the Paulding County UDO. I guess one question directly regarding Hiram, could Hiram consider adding that district into their UDO?
Is that the, you got any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, continue with it.
It stated that the PV zoning will be considered for inclusion later, you know. I think we first got notice of it last, last February, and you immediately started working with, with a, with a group that's interested in developing it with the commercial in place, and the commercial is in place already to a great extent. And plans are, you know, some contracts have already been issued for other commercials, so this is not a situation where somebody's just trying to, you know, to come in and build a bunch of apartments. It's, you know, being the property that, that is across from the hospital, that is a very busy area, they need a lot of the services that can be put there and will be put there with the commercial, and also, you know, some housing for people. That's, that's something that's needed right there. And so I guess, while it may not be a priority for the county and, and at this point, it's sort of a priority for us, you know, to continue with our, with our plans and our development, if possible. Now, this is in the City of Hiram, I mean, yes, the City of Hiram, so that's why I'm asking if, you know, the City of Hiram can consider adding that, that district to your UDO.
I'll be happy to take that back to the council under advisement. I will hedge to say that generally speaking, we would prefer, and they would generally wait for the county to have fully fleshed out what they're doing with Planned Village, and then if we did adopt it, it would be a version of that contoured to the City of Hiram, something that would fit. There is no finished product that I have seen, either here in my position with the Planning Commission, or in my position with the City of Hiram, that I could even begin to tell you what it would contain, other than the same thing that you probably saw back in February.
Okay. I understand, and I appreciate any, you know, any input or, you know, information we could get about that. But also, would just like to know, you know, in general, what is the timeline for revisiting this and getting it back into the UDO or some version of it?
We would then be following what Community Development for Paulding County is doing. We're a few months behind as far as the adoption of the UDO, almost a year behind, simply because we knew that once the adoption took place, there would likely be several points of amendments that would need to be made, and waiting for those to take place gives us a cleaner document-
Right.
-to try to work from. Of course, we'll probably have to come back and revisit it from this particular discussion, see if it needs to be addressed or amended, or whatever we do eventually adopt. But I would assume from the UDO for Hiram, consideration would probably be either in January or early, or February.
Okay.
Depending on the outcome of, you know, the public hearing and what the council wants to do.
Well, given what you just said, then I guess I'm, can direct that question to the county, you know, as to when they, they might start looking at the PV.
Certainly, it could be a conversation aside from the public hearing to address that specifically. I don't know if they were prepared to discuss PV today.
Okay.
So, and certainly it was not part of the conversation with the original public hearing, nor this one.
It just seemed like a great time to look at it before it gets approved.
It's been brought up, and I'm sure that we'll have further conversation on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak? Then I am closing the public hearing comment portion on this second agenda item. At this time, I will entertain a recommendation from the Planning Commission. This will be forwarded to the Hiram City Council for their consideration. I'd like a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Ellis. I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? All opposed?
Actually.
And an abstention, so the motion passes five, zero, and two. You might have to write that in on the vote sheet. Thank you very much for your patience on that. We'll move forward with the regular agenda. We'll move forward with the regular agenda. Any applicant called forward to present their application, if you would please direct all your comments to the chair. Again, I've already covered the speaking time is the same as 15 minutes allotted for those wishing to speak for. Applicant reserve some of that time if they wish to for rebuttal. Anybody wishing to speak against, 15 minutes will be allotted. Anybody who has questions, comments, or concerns will come out of the same pool of minutes. Questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners would not count against you at this time. Mr. Robinson.
Okay. First application today is 2022-06-SUP. It's application by Solid Water Holdings LLC requesting a special use permit to develop a self-storage facility behind a proposed retail building. Property is owned B-2 Highway Business District and is located in Land Lot 851, District 2, Section 3. It's on the east side of Villarica Highway, also known as State Route 61, and it's south of Hiram Sooty Road, also known as State Route 120 Connect. The address of the property is 3363 Villarica Highway. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with six printed stipulations. An applicant is present, and we have not had any in the Planning and Zoning Office, any opposition noted.
You've had none?
None.
For the applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore. I'm pleased to represent here on behalf of the applicant and owner of this property, which is Solid Water Holdings. This property is 5.9 acres. It's just almost six acres in size, located just off, located on Villarica Highway as indicated by Mr. Robinson. What's being requested today is a special use permit to use a portion of the property for self-storage. The property's already been rezoned back in 2013 and has a zoning designation currently of B-2. So this is not a rezoning from a residential category to a commercial category. The property is already zoned to that commercial B-2 category. What is planned, per the site plan, is to have a retail building, retail use under the B-2 ordinance along the frontage, the very limited frontage that this property has, and then to be able to then increase the real commercial opportunity for the entirety of the tract, because it is six acres, by implementing self-storage as well. The difficulty with this property is really its shape. It's got less than 200 feet of frontage along Villarica Highway, and then it opens up as it goes to the rear to have its full six acres. In addition, one of those problems from a visibility standpoint from Villarica Highway is the property drops in elevation about 30 feet, well, actually, just over 30 feet from Villarica Highway from front to back. And so it's dropping 30 feet back to where you see, where the stream is indicated at the back corner of the property. What that leaves this property with is a visibility challenge from Villarica Highway to utilize the full six acres as B-2 commercial property. It becomes very difficult from a use standpoint, other than what you can put up front, thereby kind of leaving a lot of the acreage not really desirable for full retail B-2 use because of the lack of visibility that occurs along 61 Villarica Highway. So the thought process here is to be able to go ahead and have the proposed retail use. It's a minimum 5,000-square-foot retail building that would be constructed at the front with the appropriate parking to provide for that full retail use with the balance of the property being developed for self-storage. What that does is enable the property, like I said, to have its full commercial opportunity. In this instance, storage like this does not need that level of visibility to be successful. The retail, though, does, and that is the goal here. Any other type of retail or commercial type of use under the B-2 just could not utilize that full, even four or five acres or six acres of the property because of that very limited visibility. The property, you know, is bounded with commercially designated properties of B-2. It's also adjacent to a cemetery as well as across the street from the church. And so from a fitability standpoint, we believe that having it utilized for B-2 with the full retail in the front, but then the balance is the self-storage provides for a low-impact, low-intensity use for our residential neighbors that are to the rear and side of us. But by using full commercial use for the property, that provides a true community service in the storage as well as adding to the retail opportunities along this stretch of Villarica Highway. As noted by Mr. Robinson's report, this proposal is in conformance with the 2022 Comprehensive Plan and Future Development Map. It is in the Sooty Crossroads Community Area and fits within those community area guidelines and proposals and goals. One of the staff conditions and stipulations I do want to note for you is that they have proposed and recommended that we ensure that there is a minimum 40-foot landscape buffer on Villarica Highway that would shield or screen the storage use, which we're agreeable to. Once we have our full site plan and landscape plan, we'll be working with staff and coordinating with staff to ensure where that goes in so that the true intent here is met. That is, if you just pass by, what you would see is the retail site, and the storage would then be behind it and not very visible, as stated, because again, the property falls away from you if you're on Villarica Highway. In addition, we would have the full 40-foot minimum landscape buffers adjacent to the residential properties and are in agreement with the staff-proposed conditions. We believe this proposal for a special use permit, as stated, does meet the goals and intents of the various future land use plan and comprehensive plan documents. It enables this property to reach its full commercial potential, which I believe is also a goal. And lastly, we are in agreement and respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners following staff's recommendation for approval with all conditions agreeable by the applicant. Both myself and Jonathan Barrett, representative of Solid Water Holdings, are here, happy to answer any questions that you may have for us. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Mr. Moore, I just wanted to confirm. You mentioned one of the stipulations. There are a total of six, and you are stating that you're in agreement with all six?
We are in agreement with all six on behalf of the applicant. That's correct.
I'll go ahead and open it up to questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant.
Due to the safety, you're going to be hard-pressed to find a place that has worse traffic there on Highway 61. Would you be okay with a right turn in, right turn out of that property?
If you're speaking of deceleration, acceleration type of lanes to...
No, I'm talking about right turn in, right turn out, no left turn going south on Highway 61.
Right. Understanding is that future plans for this section and segment of Villarica Highway do have it as a four-lane divided, and so ultimately, that's what it will be.
Okay.
It's my understanding from future plans that are in place already.
Oh, that's not an accurate depiction of your property. Is it because you're showing the county pumping station to be on your property there?
The county pumping station on the property. I may have to find exactly where you're speaking of.
In the top-left-hand corner there, there's a water pumping station for an emergency pump there.
Oh, okay.
That's a little building.
Yes. That's shown outside of our property boundary. I see where... I just couldn't find it, but I see where it is now.
Yeah, it's showing inside the property there. I just wanted to make sure that that was...
On our survey, it's not shown within our property boundary.
Okay.
So correct. I think it just showed up that way on the GIS parcel.
And you're proposing how many buildings? You're showing one commercial building, but it's also showing another proposed building in the back.
There are a total of, a total of nine proposed storage buildings with one proposed full retail commercial building in the front that would screen all of that.
You indicated that the property was zoned in 2013 for commercial.
Yes.
Has any time between now and then, your client or anyone, applied through Georgia DOT for access to the property? Because it's pretty limited. I mean, it's small.
Right. I don't believe so, that there's been an application to GDOT for the commercial use.
We don't know what they've said about access to these.
Right. But we have been, we do have coordination with them, which is why we know about the project.
Okay.
And ensure we've accommodated that project with our plan.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
The pictures that you're showing show a mixture of stone brick and stucco. Will that be on all four sides?
Of the retail, right. There will be three sides of that material for the retail building up front, which you'll see. The back will be painted metal to match.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I'd like to ask the water sewer person. Is sewer available to this site?
Ray Wooten, Director Wooten. You can use this mic if you would prefer, if it's live.
Currently, we do not have sewer all the way up in the basin, but this is in Sweetwater Basin, but it's not projected to get here for quite a while.
So Nebo is the closest sewer that we have to it?
Yeah, it's...
Okay, thank you. So would you be planning on putting it on septic?
That is correct, and then we would provide for dry sewer per the stipulation recommended by staff. That's correct.
Any other questions to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I do have a question.
I think your mic is off.
There we go. Okay, thank you. I have a question. So we all know how long road construction can take, and we live on 92, many of us are off of 92. So 61, it might be a while before that is done there. I want to kind of piggyback on Mr. Leggett's question about the right turn in and out. Are you willing to do that now, not after the road is widened, but now do the right turn in and right turn out?
Yes, yes, because we know the road is coming at some point, so this project needs to be able to accommodate that. But yes, we can agree to that commitment today.
Can we put that in the stipulations then, as one of the stipulations?
We can recommend it.
George probably could address this if he would like.
Commissioner, one of the original stipulations when this was rezoned, I believe it was that access would have to be approved by GDOT, obviously in coordination with future projects, but they would be the entity that would determine what access they would allow.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you, sir. I will ask now if there's anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application, you can come forward now. If there's anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns, you may come to the lectern. Thank you. At this time, then, I would ask the Planning Commission if you would give, entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-06-SUP. Please keep in mind, there are currently six listed stipulations. There was a request by the Paulding Board of Commissioners to consider a seventh as a right-in, right-out stipulation, understanding that GDOT ultimately is the deciding entity.
I make a motion to approve with number seven being access to Highway 61 will be limited to right turn in, right turn out.
So we have a motion from Mr. Leggett with the six listed stipulations, correct? And then the seventh added, right turn, right in, right out, access for the property. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to next, December 13th, meeting of the Board of Commissioners for their consideration at 2:00. The applicant must be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chairman, the next two applications are related. I thought I would read both applications, and then they would both be considered separately.
That's fine.
Okay. Next application, 2022-07-SUP, application by Elite Engineering. Let me go back. I'm getting ahead of myself. 2022-25Z, application by Elite Engineering requesting to rezon 0.634 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District to develop a commercial truck parking center. Property is located in Land Lot 743, District 19, Section 2. Post site is located east of Reynolds Road in Hiram, Georgia. The address is 299 Reynolds Road. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with four printed stipulations. And the other application, 2022-07-SUP, application by Elite Engineering requesting a special use permit in concurrence with the rezoning 22-25Z to develop a commercial truck parking center. Property is .68 acres in size and located in Land Lot 743, District 19, Section 2. Proposed site is located on the east side of Reynolds Road, 299 Reynolds Road, Commission Post 3. Staff has also recommended approval on the SUP, five printed stipulations, and applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in. Sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon again. My name is Jonathan Jones with Elite Engineering. I'm here representing Truck Parking LLC. I'll give you a little history about this property. The surrounding property had already been purchased by my client, and it was already zoned for the available use of a truck parking center. We've already completed the construction drawings, went through the LDP process, also went through a waiver process to eliminate the requirements for a left-turn lane because this is on a dead-end road in an area that is virtually all industrial. The only non-industrial would be the northeast, which is an existing Cobb County subdivision. The entire property has a 50-foot minimum buffer required all the way around it, and in that northeast corridor where the Butts Residential has a 100-foot buffer. So the intent of this application is basically to close the property in and make it one entity, self-contained. This home was on the property, it was part of the property. It just, in the prior zoning history, for whatever reason, was never zoned. Perhaps it was a residential property and the family owned the rest and zoned the rest of the property industrial. So it, for all intents and purposes, is to clean up the property and make it one solid entity of property. Staff has recommended approval. It is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. My client has reviewed and accepts the five zoning stipulations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this application, either the special use part or the actual zoning portion.
Just to reiterate, you're accepting of all five of the listed stipulations for this particular application?
Yes.
Any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
There is a house on that property at this time, isn't there?
There is an existing home on that .63 acres, yes, sir.
What, is it going to be torn down?
Yes, sir. It'll be demolished and removed from the property.
That's a nice-looking house.
Yeah. You probably can have it and move it if you want it.
It's a nice-looking house, be tearing it down.
Yeah.
But all that does now, because it was kind of wonky as far as trying to figure out what the two plaits you were showing here, all you're doing is completing that whole track.
Yes, sir.
Does it go down to the old garage, actually to that old garage? Because it wasn't real plain when we were looking at it.
Yes, sir. All of the structures out there are included on the .63 acres, and ultimately, all will be removed. There's not going to be an office... There's not going to be an, a office on property, so therefore there's no, there's no need for any water or sewer connections. It'll literally be a parking for trucks. This group has, has owned several of these type facilities in the metro Atlanta area, and so they're accustomed to the security requirements, and they acknowledge the buffer requirements that Paulding's placed upon this development, and they're amenable to those.
So, is the old garage a part of this property, or is it a separate property?
It's all. It, it's all a part of this property.
All a property, yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I do have a question, and that is concerning the road there. It didn't, I went by there yesterday just to take a look at it, and it seems like the, the road is in maybe questionable shape for truck traffic. Is there any plans from the Paulding DOT or someone else to pave that road or make it more substantially able to bear the weight of a truck without tearing up the road?
Right now, that road is not on our current list of roads to be repaved. We can look at it and determine how it ranks in relation to other roadways that need repaving. Obviously, we do a certain amount of miles per year, roughly 50, 55, but we will look at that and rate that road and then see how it does rank against other roads in terms of need, and also look at the pavement thickness, the design, to see if that does need to be upgraded with a resurfacing project for, to accommodate all these trucks. Originally, I think this was part of the old Cleburne Parkway, and then it, once the East Hiram, Bill Carruth Parkway came in place, the use changed a little bit. The volume went down for a number of years, but now, obviously, with the industrial that's happening in this location, you're seeing more heavy trucks utilize it.
Well, I think the project is very consistent with the, the use around it and so on, and that makes sense. I don't object to the project at all. I just want to make sure that those trucks can get in and out. They're going to be back there.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Not really a question, just clear up a thing for you, Roger. I think you're talking about the old bookout building?
Yes, the old bookout building.
That's not on this property.
That's not on it, okay.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the garage up there. No, it's boxed out. It's not part of it. I think it still operates as a automobiles facility.
It had a "For Sale" sign in front of it yesterday.
Any other questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? If you would, please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Yeah, I'm Jim Aldrich. Live at 725 Laird Road in Hiram.
Could you repeat your last name? I'm sorry, sir.
Aldrich.
Aldrich, thank you.
I live fairly close to that, right off of Bill Carruth, and I know for a fact there's not enough truck parking. Now, with the county having the special stipulations on the truck, overnight truck parking, there's a lot of truckers, but there's no place for them to park. If you noticed, I'm sure you have, there's a lot parked at these shopping centers and side of the road. And I know, I know several truckers, and I also know that in the surrounding areas, there's about 550 spots that were basically sold off, no longer available for truckers. So, there's a big demand, you know, for the, the truck parking, but right now, Paulding County, as far as I know, there's just more, probably, you probably count on one hand how many approved parking lots for the truckers, so I'm all for the, to accommodate the truckers. They live here in Paulding County. They got big rigs, and they got to have a place to park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to make comment in favor of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. I will now entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-25-Z.
I make a motion to approve with the five listed stipulations.
Motion to approve with the five stipulations by Mr. Steele. Do I have a second? Second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. We will roll on into the special use permit portion. Ask Mr. Jones or the applicant's agent or the applicant to come forward if they would like to speak on the SUP. It's y'all's choice, whoever you would like to introduce the application. I know.
SUP?
The SUP.
I thought, I thought Chris had said at the beginning we were.
He read them both at the same time, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're virtually in conjunction one another. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
This is simply so that you would be able to.
Understand.
Be compliant.
Yeah. If there's any additional questions as it relates to a special use permit.
Any questions to the applicant regarding the SUP portion? Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners? Thank you, sir. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the SUP may do so at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the SUP may do so at this time. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-07-SUP. Again, there are five listed stipulations.
I make a motion to approve with the five listed stipulations.
Motion to approve by Mr. Steele with the five listed stipulations. Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Ellis Aston, and all in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. Give me just a second, Chris. Okay. I think. I am missing the 2025 application, or at least I appear to be. I can come back to it and sign it later. That's not a problem. I just wanted. The other one we just finished, the one prior to the SUP. The 22-25 that we just finished, I don't have the signature sheet, so we'll come back to that one.
Okay.
I mean, it's already done. I'll just have to find something to sign it. All right. Chris, if you want to move forward. Sorry about that.
Next application, 2022-26Z, application by Elite Engineering requesting to rezonate 47.99 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to R3 Sewered Suburban Residential District in order to develop a 74-lot, single-family lot subdivision. Property is located in land lot 512 and 569, District 2, Section 3. Proposed site is located on the south side of Monroe Coal Road. It's west of Coal Lake Road. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff's recommended approval with 12 stipulations, and we do not have any noted opposition on this application. An applicant is present.
The applicant will please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon again. I'm Jonathan Jones with Elite Engineering. I am here on behalf of Apache Land Investments for the proposed development. This is intended to be an R3 subdivision. It was geared up to come into zoning prior, just prior to the modification to the UDO where the perimeter buffers were added, and it was at that time around 86 lots, and it is, because of the, the perimeter buffers and frontage buffers, it has been reduced down to 74 lots. The requirement for a left turn lane also is a, is a, you know, financially an impact to this development. This project is on the city of Dallas sewer system, so it is not a impediment to Paulding County's sewer system. It will be on the Paulding County Water System and on a Paulding County DOT road. My client has reviewed the zoning stipulations, and they're in agreement with all of them except number nine. The attorney for Apache Land Investments said that they viewed that as a quid pro quo for a voluntary stipulation of $74,000 for an improvement to Coal Lake Road. This property actually enters onto Monroe Coal Road, and it is our belief that a majority of our traffic will go directly to Buchanan Highway, therefore avoiding Coal Lake and the Curvy, the Curvy Road of Coal Lake. So, we request that, that stipulation either be modified or reworded to be an impact fee or such. Other than that, here, amenable to all the other zoning stipulations. Staff has recommended approval. It is in conformance with a future land use plan, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you have about this zoning application.
As you've already addressed, my typical question about the stipulations, I'll go ahead and open it to questions from the planning commission. Come back if I need to. Any questions from the planning commission?
On the road, I know we're asking for $1,000. Is that, that's necessary, am I correct, Mr. Jones? To improve the road?
We had met with the developer and the engineer on October 24th that discussed it. This area, you're seeing a lot of development happening, obviously Monroe Coal, Coal Lake, Buchanan Highway. The county is going to have to, to provide decent level of service. We're going to have to start some roadway projects, actually discussed this morning with GDOT. Looking at portions of Buchanan Highway, Coal Lake Road intersection. If you've been through there, you know how close that is to 278 in the geometrics, Coal Lake Road itself. So it's not just Coal Lake Road, it's that whole certain area of roadway network that, you know, folks that move into these homes are going to be driving for the most part. So, again, we don't have an impact fee, but we, you know, like to have developer contributions towards these type of projects because it does benefit the end users.
How do we come up with 74,000? How do we come up with $1,000 a lot?
Again, that's a, that's a portion of it. As I said, it's, these are, as you know, James, roadway projects are very expensive. Like I said, it's just, it's a contribution towards that, so.
So, this had already been a point of discussion with the developer prior to this meeting. It wasn't a surprise?
It was October 24th we had discussed it in person, yes. And then I got an email yesterday morning.
Is the site distance enough on that curve that they won't be required to have a left turn lane?
The left turn lane, that's part of the development regulations essentially. So again, there's a waiver process. If you do not want to put in a left turn lane if it's shown not to be needed, there's that process to do that. Obviously, when it comes to the development plan review, that's when you look at things such as site distance, et cetera, making sure that the design as shown meets the requirements of the development regulations.
That includes the feasibility of where the entrance to the roadway is actually going to end up being. That happens during plan review, correct?
Like I said, exactly. You know, when you see something like this, it's essentially, it's a 2D type drawing. You don't see the 3D.
No, it's hard to squeeze an intersection any tighter than that right there. It's, it has to make it without a turn in lane as far as the drive can see, so.
Agreed, and again, there's, you know, the way it's shown with the minimum amount of property that they own, it's going to impact the, their neighbors. If there was a turn lane there, yes, it would impact their driveway, so again, that was one of our concerns with this particular development.
Any other questions to the director? Thank you, George.
Thank you.
I would ask, just for comment from, if you don't mind, we'll put you on the spot, Mr. Phillips. Stipulation number nine, which states that it's a voluntary contribution of $1,000 per lot, of which equates to 74,000 for the 74 proposed lots. It's a stipulation, recommended stipulation in the zoning case, but even the stipulation is calling it voluntary. What is your take from a legal standpoint on keeping it, not keeping it, the way that may have or may not have?
Well, I would say at this point, it's certainly not a voluntary, voluntary agreement. It says voluntary, but the applicant has indicated they're not agreeable to that stipulation. So if the, if the commission is inclined to keep number nine in there, it needs to be amended to be, shall contribute. There's potentially some legal issues regarding exactions. It's something I would have to research on this particular one to see what exactly is being asked for and how does it impact the property. And, and I'll clarify one more thing. There was reference to impact fees. Paulding County does not have impact fees, and we won't convert it to an impact fee. That's a statutory construction which Paulding County does not have.
All right, have you got a question?
Yeah. To leave that in, all we need to do is, if we wanted to leave it in, is remove the word voluntary.
Yes.
Okay, the applicant is still available. Is there any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Have you talked with Brandon about the sewer and worked that out with the city?
Yes, sir. There is a development agreement in place, and that, that was something I wanted to mention. To the east, I'm working on a project that's 566 homes that GeoSams is building around Coal Lake. It's called the Armors of Silver Trail, and then adjacent to that, Mr. Pearson is going through a DRI process right now for 788 additional homes, of which he will be obviously obligated to do a lot of the improvements that'll be necessary to meet the DRI threshold. But both of those are in the city, and there is no zoning stipulations and no, no one has, has requested through zoning for those parties to invest in the road improvements. So, basically, the DRI process will require Mr. Pearson to do it. As far as I know, GeoSams only has to do left turn lanes, and therefore that's one of the reasons why my client is objecting to having to put forth $74,000 when there's 1,200 homes coming in beside him that are not stipulated the same way because they're not in the jurisdiction of Paulding County.
That's an additional comment, so, I mean, you're back on the clock as far as that, just addressing the sewer from.
Oh, okay, yeah. Sewer, we have, we have a development agreement in place with him, yes, sir.
But as you have gone down that road, I do have a noted comment from Director Jones.
I will say the, the DRI, the DRI cane break, that's still, I believe, in Paulding County. That has not been, gone through the city of Dallas yet. They do have the opportunity, obviously, to incorporate into city limits, but that has not happened at this time. The DRI study is one of the items that, you know, has to be completed and has been done, but there's other also comments, et cetera, that can be requested by the entity that's, you know, maintaining, accepting these plans, whether it be Paulding County or the city of Dallas, when these plans come through regarding roadway improvements, the roadway network, et cetera.
Okay. Are there any other questions to the applicant from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Am I due so now? Hearing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come around. Hearing none, at this time, then, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-26-Z. There are 12 listed stipulations. There is contention on the ninth that it either be made mandatory or be withdrawn altogether. There is no option to convert it to an impact fee. I do need to back up. Did you have questions from the school board? I am so sorry. Mr. Wicks, Jonathan, I may need you for a moment.
Yes, the development, or the proposed development, wanted to give everybody an idea of where those schools and the impact to that, to the school system would be. Currently, the district zonings would impact our Poole Elementary School, our South Paulding Middle School, and our Paulding County High School. Of course, currently, the zoning is an R2, so there would be a potential residential development on that property. Doing a rough estimate based upon the 74 lots out of 15,000 square foot if it was rezoned to the R3 and then converting that back to that R2 would give us a rough estimate yield of 56 lots, which at our current student yield factor would be roughly 36 students into our school system. However, going to the R3 would increase that by 11 students, so we would go from a estimated 36 to an estimated 47. And the way that breaks out is we would have five at our elementary, three at our middle, and three at our high. As those numbers seem low, want to kind of also mention to the fact that school system has not been, you know, able to get outside of our post-COVID stipulations and circumstances where we are impacted by, you know, lack of employees and the hardships that come along with that. So just because we have some of the schools, for example, Poole Elementary, right now with our FY '23 standings, we are looking at roughly 447 students inside of that facility as an estimation, or a rough 58% capacity for that particular school. However, we do not staff that school for 100% capacity. We staff the school for the capacity of the students that are actually there. So one child coming into a school system could potentially be an impact for special custodial services, transportation services, and things of that nature. I would like to note, Paulding County High School, out of the three affected schools, would be the most affected because currently we are at 114% capacity at Paulding County High School currently.
It's good information to have. Did you have any questions that you wish to direct to the applicant's agent?
The one question, going from the R2 to the R3, looks like we would go from a 35-foot setback to a 30-foot setback. Is that correct? And if that is the case, with the home sizes increasing, from R2 would have been 1,100, 1,100 square foot heated to, I believe, 1,800 square foot heated. The concern would also be for the increase of potential parked traffic inside of the subdivision. If you've got visitors, you've got additional residents, you've got people that are living in that home and then parking on the subdivision on, on the street itself, that's also a potential concern for a school system and the transportation. You've got a 72-passenger bus or a 92-passenger bus that's having to mitigate those curves and trying to get around additional parked traffic in that. So I don't know if there has been a study or if there's anything that we can be said or addressed to that potential setback and that potential concern with any, any additional increased parked traffic on, on the actual roads themselves inside of the development.
I would, do you have anything you would like to add to that concern?
If I could.
Please.
So I've had this come up before in Cobb and Bartow County is really doing a big study right now as it relates to this, because he, he's exactly right. If you take a, a development like a Heritage Club that's in the city of Dallas, and I think they have 18-foot front setbacks, well, I drive a truck and it's longer than 18 feet. So typically, builder's gonna build a house right up on the setback because that's less concrete, less landscaping. I mean, I would too. That's just how it is. Well, the problem is that the vehicle is typically across your sidewalk. The good thing about the R3 is it's 30-foot. And so you're gonna have from the back of curb to the right of way 13 feet, and then from the right of way to the home is another 30. So you'll be 43 feet from the edge of the house to the back of the curb. Or if it's got a five-foot sidewalk, you'll be 38 feet. So typically, all builders build it to be at least two cars wide because it's a two-car garage. So you're gonna have two cars that can park in the, in the garage, and in theory, you'll have 38 feet to either park four vehicles or at a minimum, two large vehicles and two compact vehicles. So it will never be eliminated that somebody's not parking on the street. But I will say that in my experience and what, what I've just experienced in a smart growth meeting in Bartow County is 30-foot front setbacks, according to them, eliminate about 90% compared to not having them and being 20-foot setbacks. That's the PRD typically would be, or I think even the R55 has a 20-foot setback. So this, this actual zoning behooves that opportunity to, to negate some of that parking in the right of way.
Thank you.
Hopefully that helps answer some of it.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
We see in a lot of our R2 subdivisions, people parking on the street as well.
And it doesn't seem like we can eliminate it unless we look at it in a different ordinance somewhere in the county. And Director Jones, is that not something also that the DOT considers as far as street construction? I mean, to the degree that you can anticipating what people are going to do, you have standards in place that would hopefully mitigate that.
Obviously, when it comes to, you know, roadway network, road design, you try to design the road to meet the speed. Most subdivisions in Paulding County are posted 25 miles an hour, so the road itself is designed to meet 25. That includes stopping site distance, intersection site distance. Obviously, that helps. The county does have an ordinance regarding parking that's currently in place. I believe it's, when it comes to the parking, I think a vehicle can stay in place no more than seven days at one, one particular spot, as the current ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm glad that's being looked at in consideration because on a public safety standpoint, getting, when you've got cars parked in the street and you've got a house on fire near the back of the development, it's hard to get a fire engine down through there, especially a ladder truck. It's almost impossible to get a truck down through there. So that's something that we do need to keep in consideration because those ladder trucks are longer than school buses. So it's a challenge to get them down there, especially you've got somebody's life in, in danger like that.
Mr. Wicks, did you have any further questions? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Mr. Robinson?
I just had, wanted to make one comment because there was comparison made between the R2 and R3 district. The R2 district is correct, it's a minimal house size of 1,100 square feet heated space. The R3 district is 1,800 square feet heated space.
Okay. Larger house, that means more kids, right? Is there anybody here that would wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Board of Commissioners, Mr. Stover?
Just wanted to comment, as far as on R3, it's, in R3, you gotta have HOAs in place. So HOAs usually tend to do a better job than anybody in policing people parking in the streets and stuff like that also. So what I, what I have seen, you know, subdivision with HOAs, they can actually handle, police themselves better than even, say, the county marshals can, so, just make that.
Thank you. Chairman Carmichael?
This is really for my own education, and Jacob, you may be able to answer this. There's two cul-de-sacs in this plan. How do the, are the buses allowed to go into the cul-de-sac or they just pick the kids up out on the road?
So typically, the, the buses will go into the cul-de-sacs, obviously, to make those turns. You would, depending on where those children are, I would assume, how many children there are would determine how those bus stops would be. That would be a discussion that we would have to have with our actual transportation director to find out exactly how they determine those stops and how many stops that they would actually have to generate, whether or not they're able to, you know, combine some of those stops. But whether or not a bus stops inside of a cul-de-sac or not would be determined based upon that pickup ratio or route.
Yes, if there's a car parked on the street in the cul-de-sac, it'd make it very difficult.
It does make it difficult. Also, if you notice inside of that, the second cul-de-sac, you've, on the bottom right-hand corner, you've kind of got that little bit of a jut out. Of course, what you typically have is, anybody that's ever driven a large vehicle, people tend to cut the curve right there, so you end up having a little bit of an issue with the back tires of a bus going over somebody's property. You end up having somebody wanting to come out and put a barrier or a blockade out there on their property, which causes some issues. But there are a number of, of incidents that happen that with buses inside of little cul-de-sacs like that, just because of that, cars parked on there or various issues inside of the cul-de-sacs.
Thank you. Hearing no one else wishing to speak, I will entertain a motion on application 2022-26-Z. Again, there are 12 listed stipulations. There was a quest, request about stipulation number nine as to whether to delete it, to amend it, to, from being voluntary to mandatory, or leaving it as is.
I'll make a motion to approve with the current 12 stipulations as is.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Steele recommending all 12 stipulations as is.
Will we scratch the word voluntary?
Not under my motion.
No. Do I have a second? One more time, do I have a second?
I have a second. Second?
Second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? All opposed? I'm sorry, Ms. Fitzgerald, how did you vote? In favor? And so we're at three and three. Lo and behold, we have a last one meeting of the year and I gotta break the tie. Y'all play dirty pool. No, I believe that further discussion can be had between the developers and the county staff before it gets to the Board of Commissioners on the 13th. I will vote in favor of the motion by Mr. Steele, therefore breaking the tie, passing At this time, it has been requested that we take a five-minute recess, so look at the clock, please, and be back in place in five minutes. Thank you very much. the clock, please, and be back in place in five minutes. Thank you very much. Everyone, please take your seat. Let's get the wheels rolling again. Mr. Robinson, if you would, please, bring on the next application.
Okay, continue to know, next application, 2022-28Z, City of Hiram. Application by Fred Fatimi, requesting to rezone 3.97 acres from B2 Highway Business District to I-1 Lot Industrial District for the purpose of developing and operating a multi-level self-storage facility. Property is located in Land Lot 549, District 2, Section 3. Some of the northeast, at the northeast intersection of Bill Carruth Parkway and Greystone Parkway. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended denial, but it is recommended that there's... 11 printed stipulations if it's considered for approval. And staff has received several calls of concerns and opposition on this one. And applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
I'm a representative of the applicant. Actually, the applicant just is still outside the door here.
Would you care to retrieve them?
If you don't mind, yes.
Maybe they're by the elevators. If you're, if you're not prepared, let's wait for the commissioner to get... No one out there? If you'd like, we could postpone consideration until you can check and see where your associate is.
Okay, they'll be fine.
So at this point, we will skip over. Mr. Robinson, you can go back. Oh, okay, as we were. If you would, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Chris Rhodes. I'm with GYS Development, here on behalf of Mr. Fatimi. Just a little bit of information about who we are. We've, we own and operate over 50 facilities in about 16 states. Our main focus is the multi-level climate-controlled Class A buildings. And I think Ms. Wilson gave you some printouts, and in there you'll see our product is, you almost have to be told it's self-storage. Looks like office building or medical building. But anyways, that's our, that's our focus. We partner with a group called Argus, Professional Storage Management. They manage over 200 facilities. So it's professionally managed. Obviously, we take into account all the operational management items that may concern a community with security, and we restrict access. Again, that our product is the interior climate-controlled, so that attracts a certain tenant. And you'll see on our proposed site plan, there was a few comments that, and we've, we've since made some changes. There's an updated one that's, that's, you should have in your hand, based on some comments and stipulation from you guys, mainly concerning access. So we've made some changes to that, but similar to a comment made earlier. So one thing that is unique about self-storage is you can capitalize on unique parcels, whether topography or slope or whatever. But, and that's what we're doing here, or proposing here on this, on this property. There's a, there's some elevation changes, and we're able to utilize that. We've got a 50,000-foot footprint, two levels, but they're both accessible from the ground level. So we basically have a basement. So again, that's what we're depicting here. But, but again, deferring from the site plan shown on the screen right now, we've adjusted some of the drives that show appropriate setbacks, or there was, there was a couple comments in terms of needing to be a certain distance from Bill Carruth, and we've adjusted the site plan accordingly. And then again, our focus is, is that Class A building utilizing above-average architectural materials. And again, that's in your packet as well, showing some of the materials are using stone and cement, stucco, and some other items. And then again, some construction examples where you'll see the type of product that we focus on. And going back to some of the comments, so it's very, it's very low impact, really from all the public services. Couple different studies that's been done previously. I mean, even on a facility this size, you're looking at eight to 10 visitors a day, and in terms of even parking, which, which of course, we're obliged to all the necessary requirements. But even at peak, which I think on this particular study was about 5:00 PM, there was only a need for six parking spaces. So it's a very low impact in terms of all the utilities and other items. You know, obviously, there's, people come and store their stuff and leave. So, and then there's also, obviously, Hiram classifies self-storage as industrial, but it really is a commercial and service business. It even provides services to some of the local commercial businesses for storing inventory and other items. But, and there's even a retail component where we sell moving supplies and boxes and other things. So, but again, most of the, just want to, and then as well, so in the, in the industrial class, I mean, there's some other uses that probably aren't as appealing as a Class A self-storage facility. So that was another item that I pointed out in the package as well. So, but majority of what I wanted to do, just kind of describe more of our product, the type of building that we would plan to build, and the type of service we would, we would provide to the community. But any other questions, I'd be, I'd be glad to answer.
Obviously, based on the recommendation of staff, I will go forward with the consideration that the Hiram Council chooses to approve the project. There are 11 listed stipulations. If you had an opportunity to review those, and are you in agreement with those 11 stipulations?
Yes, sir. The only comment we had was on relocating the main water line, and our thought, if, if our improvements come within three feet, vertical feet of impacting that line, we would, we would agree to relocate it. But that was the only, only item. In our, in our revised site plan, we've addressed all the other comments and stipulations.
And you realize that if this were to receive favorable treatment by the city council, and you were able to move forward with the industrial zoning that you're seeking, developing the property would still have to meet the development standards that Paulding County has, which may then throw you back in conflict. And I don't know this off the top of my head, but Director Wooton with Paulding Water and Sewer may still be talking to you about the relocation of the water line at the plan review.
Yes, sir.
Process. Mr. Wooton, if you cared to speak to that, you're welcome to.
Yes, we would require any water line to be removed out from underneath the pavement.
By a standard amount? It should fall outside of 20 feet or something like?
Well, any one that's within, underneath the pavement. In other words, our lines are underneath the pavement. Along Bill Carruth, there's not an issue. But the one that's alongside the side of the building, it is not tremendously deep. So if there's an issue, we would ask for it to be relocated.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
No, sir.
I have not really a question, but a statement. Well, maybe it is a question to you. I was on the board when this was originally zoned, and it was my understanding that it was going to be used as something similar to a medical facility, or some kind of, something like that, that would complement the proposed hospital at that time. It wasn't actually there. But why the change from that kind of environment to this?
Yeah, I'm not sure what Mr. Fatimi previously, I think at one point he proposed townhomes, which I think was not approved. But I was introduced to Fatimi through, through a broker. And again, we're, we're under contract on this property. So I'm not sure what his previous uses or desires were for the, for the property. But this is, obviously, just, and as you can see on, on the agenda, this, there's other, other people that think that there's a demand for this type of use. So anyways, there was just market demand, and we approached Mr. Fatimi, and here we are.
Okay, thank you.
But from my understanding, the most recent use he proposed was townhomes, which, which I believe was not approved, or obviously wasn't.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
I have a question.
Ms. Seaver.
So this is in the overlay district, which means a mixture of stone, brick, and stucco. It's going to be a Class A building, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I'm not sure, is this, so I guess the overlay district is all sides that we're public can see. Is stone, brick, and stucco, do you plan on doing that on all four sides?
It, the way that, my understanding is read, it was any visible from transportation corridors, which, yes, our plan for all three sides. Right now, the way our plan is on the, on the rear, it's metal. But, but all three sides that are visible from any transportation corridor are stucco, brick, and stone.
Now, the rear would be the side that faces the housing development behind it.
Correct. Let's see. The, what elevation is that? The north elevation, or I'm sorry, the east elevation. That's the only, that's the only side that we have anything other than stucco, brick, or stone.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
I have a question for Mr. Robinson, if we can go there. Help me understand why I-1's needed for storage in this type of facility versus a special use or something on B1 or B2, like we saw earlier on the agenda?
The difference is, is the Hiram City Council has put more restrictions on climate-controlled or self-storage facilities, and has amended the ordinance back earlier in this year, I believe.
No, it was last year.
Last year, to move those facilities from a commercial, special-use category to an industrial category.
They did away with the process of applying for an SUP and just dedicated it to I-1, I-2. Any other questions from planning commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir. You can take your seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Hope. I'm the property manager for the Greystone of Paulding Homeowners Association. That would be impacted by this development. Greystone is a community of 206 homes, gated community with lots of children and young families living there. We have concerns about this property being developed as a commercial source facility due to the fact of the additional traffic, potential crime, additional vehicles coming into the area. Also, there is a school bus stop that would be at the very bottom corner of this property, at the corner of Greystone Connector and Greystone Parkway, as well as there is an additional residential community there as well. So a total of about 300-plus residential properties in the area, not to mention also a daycare with young children in the area as well. Also, there are many storage facilities in the general area. There is a new one with the new signs going up on 278 for a new storage facility that is going up. So there is an increased number of storage facilities and adequate inventory currently available with many of those storage facilities not at full capacity. So we object to, we would urge the, the planning commission to deny this request. We understand that it will go back to the City of Hiram, and we're prepared to go to the City of Hiram as well. Thank you for your time.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Greystone Parkway is gated, isn't it?
At the end of Greystone Parkway.
At the end, beyond this property?
Yes, sir. It's at the end of the property. So, as well as the other concern we have is Greystone Parkway, the association has been maintaining Greystone Parkway for years because there was never any clear designation as to who was responsible for the right-of-ways along Greystone Parkway, as well as we've been maintaining the Greystone Connector as well. So.
Thank you.
My name's Sarah Miller, and I'm a resident of Greystone, and I object to this facility. It seems overly large, and like we're trying to cover every square piece of earth that's around us. We're a nice community. We, we have good property values. I feel like it will impact us greatly in an adverse manner. We also, I don't know if Jeff mentioned, there's an apartment community on the side here, the right, that's quite large, seems to still be building. It's being well-maintained. It's, it's another area where the traffic's going to be coming in and out. Across the street, across Bill Carruth, is Darby's Crossing, another subdivision. We're all impacted by the traffic and trying to get out. There's a huge median in the road. The traffic coming from the highway, from Jimmy Lee Smith, and turning into this place would have to go down and make a U-turn to come in. It's a mess. So we, I greatly appreciate your consideration in not approving this. We don't need another storage facility. We've got plenty.
Hello, my name is Juana Gates, and I live in the Greystone community, and I oppose this two-story storage building coming up in my neighborhood. I think it's an eyesore, and I think it would damage our property value. And, and I agree with what Jeff said and the other lady, what they said. It's, it's just not a good fit in our community. It's a residential community, not a commercial, you know, community. And like they said, we have schools, we have, there's another, the cottages of Greystone, and I just oppose of a two-story storage facility coming up in my neighborhood. There's other properties around where they can build this storage unit. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michiko Wright. I am a resident of Greystone. I've been living there since 2016, and I am definitely opposed to this idea. There are a number of storage facilities, not only 278, the places where Mr. Hope has mentioned. There's a new one right next to the Walmart. The traffic coming in and out of there on Dallas Highway is horrendous. Horrible trying to get into Greystone, coming off of Bill Carruth. There's a lot of traffic, and it's definitely not something that we need to bring down our property value, and it is an eyesore. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If I need to, I guess I do. Mr. Hope, did you sign in when you came up to speak?
Yes, sir, I did.
Ms. Miller, did you sign in when you came up to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
On the, Ms. Wilson, do you want to come and just check the log? I want to make sure that we capture everybody that spoke. Ms. Gates? And Ms. Wright? Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, we will come back to the applicant. You had some time remaining. If you would like to address any of the comments that you may have heard, any other questions that may come from the planning commissioner or the board of commissioners?
Yes, sir. Just one, just a quick comment about traffic and even appearance, even compared to its current zoning of B2. We believe that its impact would be less than many other uses that are permitted by RIT currently. But again, just to emphasize traffic, it's very low impact. I mean, eight to 10 visits a day. Like I said, on a former study, at peak times, there was a demand for approximately six parking spaces. So anyways, but, and then I also just wanted to emphasize that the type of product we're going to build in terms of appearance would be quality.
There any other questions for the applicant from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you for your time. This time, we'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-28-Z for the city of Hiram. Staff recommendation is denial. However, if you choose to make a recommendation of approval, there are 11 stipulations to consider.
I'd like a motion for denial.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Leggett.
Second?
I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 4, 2 and 1. It still will be forwarded to the Hiram City Council for their consideration at the next meeting that meets all the legal posted requirements. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chairman, the next two applications are also coinciding with each other and I would, if you're okay, I'll go ahead and read both of them?
Sure.
Thank you. Application 2022-30-Z, application by Elite Engineering requesting to rezone 9.981 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to B1 General Business District, 6.181 acres and B2 Highway Business District, 3.8 acres for convenience store, office and retail development and a proposed climate-controlled storage facility. Property is located in landlots 403, 461 and 462. It's in District 3, Section 3. It's on the east side of Cedarcrest Road, north of Westbrook Creek Road. The project address is 2586 Cedarcrest Road. It's in Commission 4, Post 4. Recommendation is approval with 13 stipulations as printed and we've had no noted opposition on this one. The application 2208 SUP, it's an application by Elite Engineer requesting a special use permit in concurrence with the B2 Highway Business District rezoning, which is the case of previous case, 2022-30Z for proposed climate-controlled storage facility. Property is 3.8 acres in size and located in landlots 403, 461, 462, District 3, Section 3. Also again, east side of Cedarcrest Road, north of Westbrook Creek Road and at 2586 Cedarcrest Road. Again, it's in Post 4 and on the SUP, staff has recommended approval. Applicant's present.
The applicant will please come around, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon again. I know you guys are as tired of hearing me as I am hearing myself, so this will hopefully be my last application today. The, I'm here representing the MK Group. MK Group has met with Paulding County DOT staff at least once, if not a few times, to discuss a development agreement where they will provide the rightofway for a connector to Harmony Grove at the light that will enable the school system to have a direct access to one that light and to the Cedarcrest improvement projects that's coming along. Most of the zoning stipulations, as you read them, will have to do with road improvements and development agreements and rightofways and such as that. So my client's been very amenable to trying to coordinate and cooperate with the DOT as it relates to their requests and needs. The application is a combination of B1 and a B2 zoning, one with a special use permit as stated by Mr. Robinson. The staff has recommended approval. It is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. We have also had some discussions with the adjacent property owner of the commercial to the southwest of us, Robin and Rick Tumlin, and we're going to intend to try to provide some interparcial connectivity to try to help their retail development that's been there, I guess I designed it back in '05, to get access to the light, to try to help with that intersection for their customers, you know, exiting the property. Because I have seen a few wrecks. My office is directly north of here and I've seen a few wrecks there. So the topography from their development to ours is the only challenge, but my client is amenable and Mr. Green has requested that we try to accommodate some interparcial connectivity with that development and it's our intent to try to do so. The sanitary sewer will be provided in the Pumpkin Vine District. It would be by way of an extension through the Roamine property to the east where a sanitary sewer easement has already been secured and it would go into the development that's currently under construction called Cedarcrest Station. And as far as I know, there's not any capacity issues for commercial in that system. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. It is the intent, although mentioned previously by the prior zoning, for all four sides of the storage facility to be four-sided brick. It didn't sound to me like that was necessarily a requirement. My client is amenable to that zoning stipulation that is in here. So, and he is also amenable to the, all the other zoning stipulations that relates to the zoning and the SUP. So if you've got any questions, I'll do my best to answer them this time.
Any questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
Where do you, where do you see the access to the red light from your adjoining property south of what you're showing as a B1 office?
Their intent, their desire would be to the north of the office warehouse, the office space that's there. The only issue is the elevation of Harmony Grove at Cedarcrest is around a 960 and the elevation of their property is around a 990. So there's a 30 vertical foot difference. They do have some property though, that we could impede in and cut their grade down and use some of that dirt to build our grade up, but not doing a formal design. I don't know exactly that's, and I think the Tumlins are intending to speak. I think that's their desired entry point and if it's at all possible for us to accommodate that, we definitely would. Worst-case scenario, we could enter from our southern, basically the entrance to our development that's on our west side and come around the back of the building and access the rear of their development. But I think they really want the customers to be able to exit their parking lot and go directly to the light and exit, which makes sense. The only cumbersome problem is the 30 vertical foot that we have to come up with and I'm not going to say it can't be done or it can't be done because I haven't studied it in detail to know, but it's our intent to work with them to get them an interparcial access connectivity to that light one way or the other.
That's the former Rexstall property?
Um, yep. I don't know who they bought it from.
So you're going to have a lot of fill to the back anyway, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe you can work it out, because I've received one or two texts a month that there's an accident in an intersection.
It's a very poor intersection and the problem is it turning to the right to go to Cobb County. It's trying to get across. You've got people flying through that red light. The red light's turned. People are running that red light. I know, because I'm on it twice a day, minimum every day, and they just, there's a lot of wrecks at that entrance into their development. So it would definitely behoove them, behoove Paulding County DOT and my client's amenable to making this whole project really a good viable project. Like I said, they're providing the access to the light for the school system, for their new school they're building. So, you know, I think it's a good business, business partnership that's here that can benefit the school system, can benefit the DOT, can benefit the access. In theory, it'll also reduce some of the traffic there at Seven Hills and Cedarcrest for people who are wanting to go straight to Harmony. So there's a lot of benefit to the Parkway that's proposed here and getting them access to it, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions to the applicant from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
Being, being right there with the school, for the entrance of the school and stuff like that, is he intending to have COAM machines, which is a coin-operated amusement machine? A lot of people call them.
I don't know that he hasn't a final user secured at this point. I know that those machines are regulated, believe it or not, by the Georgia Lottery. And, you know, I don't know that he's got a finished user for the actual facility. A lot of times, he builds the facility, sells them. Sometimes he builds them, he leases them. Sometimes he builds them and operates them, but I don't think he's made a decision yet exactly who's going to house and run that actual facility.
But just with the being the school right there, the entrance and everything, I know one of the last ones that was zoned, they had a stipulation for no COAM machines and just being with the school right there, would he be volunteer to have a stipulation for no COAM machines, being that some of the stuff it does attract?
Obviously, any additional stipulation for the user is reducing the marketability of the property and the ultimate whoever intends to use it. I mean, if that's something that the board of commissioners wants to place upon them, I guess we can discuss and see how it comes out.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Please sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Rick Tumlin. I'm with RT Investment Enterprises, which joins this development on the west side. And yes, I just want to reiterate what Jonathan said, that we would like to have access to the red light in the design and we want to work with Jonathan on getting that access to the red light for safety of our patrons and it just makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Could I ask that to be a point, one of the zoning stipulations or one of the stipulations going forward?
To stipulate?
We had to say that that's something that we need to look at, being riding.
Mr. Chairman, Cedarcrest Road is a corridor overlay district.
So you have interparcial requirements?
Which requires interparcial connectivity. It's required already.
Being that it falls under the corridor overlay district, then that's really already covered. It would be covered in plan review as well. Is that sufficient? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments or concerns about this application? I will direct one question back to the board of commissioners. Are you wishing for the planning commission to include the stipulation of no COAM machines? As a part of the development or, is that a yes? Okay. We can do that and of course, if there's further conversation that needs to be had, you have until December 13th to have that conversation. So at this time, I will entertain a motion from the planning commission regarding application 2022-30-Z. There are currently 11 stipulations. There's a request from the board of commissioners to add a 12, excuse me, 13 stipulations, a 14th stipulation be added of no coin-operated machines to be utilized at this facility.
I move that we approve it with the 13 listed stipulations and adding the 14th one also.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson with a 13 stipulations and an added 14th regarding COAM machines.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? And we have one recusal on this one. Am I correct? So any opposed? And two abstentions. So the motion passes 5, 0 and 2. And then we have the SUP stipulator, or the SUP application, 2022-08-SUP. I will say the applicant has an opportunity to speak on that application if they so choose. I think we've probably heard everything you're going to add, but don't let me put words in your mouth.
Just a quick reminder, this only applies to the 3.8 acre site.
Right. So anything you wish to add?
I don't have any further, other than if there's any additional questions, I'll have to try to answer them.
Any questions to the applicant from the planning commission?
Who made the second on the first?
Mr. Aston.
Who made the motion?
Jim made the second. Aston made the, made the motion, made the second. And we're back. Any questions for the applicant from the planning commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on behalf? If you would like to just... Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-08-SUP. I'd like a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve with the recommended stipulations.
I have a second.
With Mr. Aston, a second by Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes, all opposed and an abstention. So motion passes 5, 0 and 2. And the final application for the day is a city of Hiram application. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, final application, 2022-31Z, city of Hiram, application by Amstel.
Mr. Robinson, just a moment. Just as a reminder, this application will be forwarded to December 13th at 2:00 PM. So. I'm sorry, please continue.
No, you're fine. Application 2022-31Z, city of Hiram, application by Amstel Storage Ventures XXX30, we have 31 LLC, requesting a rezoning of 9.339 acres from B2 Highway Business District to I1 Light Industrial District for the zoning compliance and expansion of an existing self-storage facility, including the development of a mixed-use retail/office space. Property is located in Land Lot 823, District 2, Section 3. It's on the west side of Hiram Douglasville Highway, also State Route 92, south of Hiram Sooty Road. It's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with seven conditions. Applicant is present.
The applicant will please come forward? If you please sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name's Joel Larkin. I'm with the law firm Sam's Larkin &amp; Huff in Marietta and I appreciate the chance to be here tonight, this afternoon, seems like tonight. As Mr. Robinson said, this application relates to a 9.3 acre tract approximately located in the city of Hiram. And if you can see from the aerial that's up there now, approximately eight acres of the project is an existing self-storage facility that was built. that was built in the late 1990s, early 2000, and it's currently known as Compass Self-Storage. The track that, the word City of Hiram, or Hiram appears on there, is an undeveloped, approximately 1.25 acre tract under the same ownership. It's a separate tax parcel, and it's been under the same ownership for a considerable period of time. This property, at the time it was developed, this use was permitted under the B2 zoning use, as is the case in Paulding County, and we've talked about that some. The City of Hiram subsequently changed their requirements, so the I-1 district is a requirement for this type of use. The applicant is proposing to expand its existing facility onto the 1.25 acre tract, which is Zone B2. In preparing the application for that 1.25 acre tract, we elected to go ahead and bring in the existing project as well, also Zone B2, so that the zoning will comply with the use. The current project is a more traditional office warehouse self-storage project, as we've seen over the years in Paulding County. The proposed expansion is for a two-story climate control facility, and it'll occupy the frontage out on Hiram Douglasville Highway. As indicated, staff has recommended approval. There are a number of conditions, and I'd love to stand up here and say readily that we agree to them, but, and I've talked with the City of Hiram zoning administrator a little bit about them. I think we agree in principle with all of them, and having an opportunity to speak with the City of Hiram between now and when they ultimately consider it, then I suspect we will agree to very similarly worded conditions. For example, number one, we read that to mean that we're seeking I-1 for self-storage only, and that we're not, if this is approved, we would not receive approval to develop other uses that require I-1, and that is our intention, and we would be agreeable to a condition that's so stated. Condition four references the corridor overlay. We are aware that it's in the corridor overlay and that we need to meet the architectural requirements. But I have seen in the past where a zoning condition like this is placed on the property, and it prevents the applicant from being able to seek a variance. And at this point in time, we've not fully engineered it enough to know whether or not a variance may be sought in the future. But we are aware that it's in the corridor overlay, and we do fully intend to meet the architectural requirements. As far as other requirements that are in there, we haven't studied them close enough. Five relates to the ongoing construction widening project for 92. We are in negotiations with the state on acquisition of right-of-way. And our negotiations include discussions about where that right-of-way will be. But at this point in time, the right-of-way is uncertain, so we're not sure exactly what agreeing to that stipulation would mean. So that's something that we'd want to discuss, continue to discuss with the state and discuss with the City of Hiram if this moves forward. Other than that, we're agreeable to the stipulation. So essentially, what we see happening here is, is we're really rezoning two pieces of property. We've got the 8.25 piece that we're seeking to rezone to get the correct conditions, but we don't propose any redevelopment of that property. So to the extent that there may be non-conformities in setbacks or otherwise, we're seeking contemporaneous variances to allow it to continue to be developed exactly the way it is. As to the 1.25 acres, it's a new development, and we understand we're going to have to move forward with, you know, under all the criteria that apply to I-1 in the overlay. And with that, I'm happy to respond to any questions that you have.
And your client will understand, too, that any future development on this property would have to go before Paulding County's plan review for any development standards that they would apply due to the development regulations? Anything you've built will have to be built according to Paulding County's development standards?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Subject to variance in waiver process and all that, that's...
As few of those as possible, right? Any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions to the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Again, this will be a, application will be forwarded to the City of Hiram at their next meeting that would conform to the advertising requirements for the legal public hearing. I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2022-31-Z, City of Hiram.
I make a motion to approve and send it to the City of Hiram.
Is that with the stipulation?
With the seven listed stipulations.
Motion to approve by Mr. Leggett with the seven listed stipulations. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero, and one. I do appreciate everybody's patience. I know this was a long meeting. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season. Merry Christmas, and we will see you in January. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Henson adjourns, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Fitzgerald. Give her that. All in favor? I will assume it's six, zero, and one.